Those of you that are watching live on YouTube right now, thank you very much for chiming in. I want to clarify one thing before we even get started, and that is that there will be no discussions directly involving COVID or Cargill in this meeting today. We have an agenda that you have links to, that you can see what's going to be discussed in today's meeting, and that's what we will remain focused on. So with that note, I will call the special meeting in council for April 21st to order at 1:31 PM. Everybody has the agenda in front of them. Therefore, I will start with a motion from councillor Moore, please, that council adopt the special meeting in council agenda for April 21st as amended to include the addition of the Southwest Dyke conversation.
I am so moved.
And for the vote, councillor Masterman?
In favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
In favor.
Come back to Cooy. Councillor Kinghorn?
In favor.
Did I miss you, Cathy? Can't hear Cathy.
No, in favor, sorry.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Councillor Nychuk?
Oh, sorry, in favor.
And Mayor Snodgrass, in favor. Motion is carried for the agenda. Adoption of minutes. So I will ask councillor Masterman for the motion that council adopt the regular council meeting minutes for March 9th, 2020 as presented.
I make that motion.
Yep. Councillor Moore?
In favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
In favor.
Councillor Cooy?
In favor.
Councillor Kinghorn?
In favor.
Councillor Nychuk?
In favor.
Second set of minutes to be adopted is Resolution SC 22-2020. So I will ask councillor Macmillan for a motion that council adopt the special meeting in council minutes for March 30th, 2020 as presented.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
In favor.
Councillor Masterman?
In favor.
Councillor Cooy?
In favor.
Councillor Kinghorn?
In favor.
Councillor Nychuk?
In favor.
Mayor Snodgrass, in favor. Motion is carried. Nicole or Cara, do you have any comments for the public comments section?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. So item number 5.1 in the agenda, 12th Avenue reconstruction, funding reallocation. Tom, is that yours?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm here today to talk about funding reallocation for 12th Avenue. The 12th Avenue from the roundabout west to essentially Baker Creek was, the reconstruction of that road was tendered out with the Southwest Dyke. Initially, that project had approximately $2.5 million funding. That funding was essentially for the road reconstruction itself. Through the development of the project, it was identified that, given the fact that the road is being rebuilt, that some of the undergrounds should be replaced. That's the standard process that we've been doing with most of these road projects throughout town. Also, there was, the need was also identified to, not need or recommendation was identified to extend the water main and loop the water main all around the Southwest, so that would be extending the existing water main from Highwood Trail, upgrading it to a 300-millimeter diameter to go all the way down 12th Avenue to First Street, Southwest. By doing that, that'll greatly improve the fire flows and fire protection in the Southwest to High River. So this work was included, all the underground work rather, was included in the Southwest Dyke 12th Avenue tender. It was set up as a deleteable item in the tender as well, in case the town wished not to proceed with it or could not find the funding. So to step back again, the original funding for the project was approximately $2.5 million. The cost to do the project, including the deep utilities, is approximately $3.66 million. So the shortfall to, the shortfall on the project, looking at all the other costs and contingencies, that sort of thing, including the deep utilities, the shortfall is approximately $1.76 million. The 12th Avenue project, it's a long-term recovery project, a project that was identified as flood damage through long-term recovery. There is the ability through long-term recovery to take funds from other approved projects and reallocate them to projects that may have overages. There's a number of projects that are still outstanding, long-term recovery projects. The lowest priority one is the reconstruction of Center Street from the roundabout south to the town boundary. It has funding assigned to it of approximately $3.1 million. Based on the fact that this project, the Center Street rebuild project, is the lowest priority for the town at this time, it's being recommended that if the town wishes to proceed with the deep utilities on 12th Avenue, that the funding be taken from that project. So what that would do, that could potentially leave that project with less than half of its existing funding. Again, as I said, this project, the Center Street rebuild, is thought to be fairly low value to the town at this time. There's been discussions with municipal affairs. To date, there's no official response from them agreeing to the reallocation of these funds, although it's my understanding there's been a verbal granted through municipal affairs, through the accounting department.
So rewind, just so that I'm clear, the funding that we're taking and going to reallocate from the Center Street project is going to be used to build the underground, the deep utilities on 12th Avenue?
Yes, that's correct, and deal with some shortfalls as well.
Right.
Because without, even without doing the deeps, the town is approximately, needs approximately half a million dollars.
Okay. So then, on the Center Street project, where does that leave that project? Am I confused here somewhere? Please help me out. If we're taking 1.8 million out of the Center Street project, where does that put that project?
So what the town would have to do would be to look to see how much residual funding is, and look at the scope of the project, and then determine if the town wants to go ahead with it. Some possibilities are perhaps only rebuilding half of the road, not going all the way to the town boundary, perhaps just going to where some of the future planned roads are going to come out.
Okay.
Essentially, the extension of, I believe it's Montith Drive in Montrose. So we would have to take a look at that, you know, at a later date and kind of see what opportunities there are.
Okay.
Just to add to that, the Center Street road in there, so if you're looking at your, the cover sheet, the first project in there is Center Street resurfacing, and Tom is contemplating reducing the funding on Center Street reconstruction. So we actually still have funding to resurface the road, but we will be now short if we wanted to actually reconstruct it from scratch. So there is still, if, from a redo the surface perspective, we still have funding to do that.
And this move would not impact any of our plans north of the roundabout?
That's correct. That's the next cover sheet.
It's all sort.
We'll do that, yeah.
Yep, just to be clear.
Yes, this doesn't impact the Center Street project we're discussing later.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tom or Riley, council?
I have a quick question, please.
Councillor Macmillan?
Thanks, just because there's a bit of feedback. Tom, did you say that we need permission from the Minister of Municipal Affairs to reallocate this money?
The Municipal Affairs has to approve the scope change to allow the deeps to be funded under their grant program.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I ask one, Mayor Snodgrass?
Yep, Michael?
I guess to Tom or to Riley, any risk or liability with not doing some of those potentials that we were going to do south of the traffic circle? Any concerns there? I mean, to me, it seems pretty straightforward that we can reallocate the funds, and there's really no issue other than that project gets deferred for a period of time. We've got several roads we'd like to fix up real nice, but it all comes down to a matter of money. So I'm just, is there any real liability in not doing that and deferring it? Thank you.
I guess I'm going, Tom and I were waiting for the other one. Who's going? Sure, I can answer that. So resurfacing definitely will be a lower standard. That is an old county road, so you can guarantee there's probably organics underneath. What we're looking at from a resurfacing perspective is basically redoing the surface. So we'll probably use the MDE or something, and/or pave on top or something. That is not something that will have an extended life. Now, the road holds up kind of okay now with axle bands, so I wouldn't be terribly concerned about it. And eventually, the developer will need to build that into a full urban road with curbs and twinning and whatnot. So that does have to take place in the future. We just have to get it to that point when that road needs that reconstruction. As opposed to doing the reconstruction now, which means coring it all out, putting, pre- putting in services for subdivisions and whatnot, for a subdivision that may or may not need it within the next 10 or 20 years. So, you know, our resurfacing is probably going to be end of life by about the time they need to build anyway, so it's probably a good match. But from a liability perspective, you're right, there is probably a little bit more increase in terms of maintenance and liability with potholes and stuff like that, but I don't think it's too significant.
Thanks, Riley, appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Cathy.
Thanks. The long-term recovery funds, there'll be 1.000 million remaining from this. There's a timeline with those funds, right? So it's not like we could potentially carry it forward and do this project down the road. I think there's a timeline to use those funds, is that not correct?
Yes, yeah, the long-term recovery, they basically are municipal affairs, I think, in discussions with them. They desire to have the town finish all these projects and close everything out. Given the fact that, you know, a number of these projects were high value, you know, Center Street, 12th Avenue, as well as the sanitary force main decommissioning, the matter, in reality, the only way you can make sure you don't go over budget is to deal with them stepwise and tender them out and kind of get your costs in. So to answer your question, yes, there's a timeline. The town can extend timelines for long-term recovery projects, although the municipal affairs does, and that has happened over the years, municipal affairs does ask the town for some sort of justification, obviously, on why they're asking, why the town is asking to defer projects. In this case, I think it makes sense to finish all of these high-value projects up and then reconcile everything and then finally finish the, finish everything up potentially next year.
And potentially, the funding could go forward if these other projects came in higher than what initially targeted at, potentially?
The town would be limited to the funds that they have remaining, if that's what you're asking, Cathy? Yes.
But some of these other higher priorities, if they happen to come in higher than what had been initially targeted, the funds could, these funds could be redirected?
Yes, to backstop them, if you will, yeah.
No further questions?
Yeah. Tom, we have all of these funds in our own bank account right now.
I believe so.
Yeah, so we're not, if a project didn't move forward and didn't go forward in a certain amount of time, does that mean that the government could take that money back from us?
I would think they may, I think they might ask you for it. Yeah, but maybe, maybe that might be a question, maybe more so for finance and accounting.
Yes. Yes, yes, Tom, if we're at the deadline date, if we don't get the extension, then the province might call for the refund. Or just like Tom said, we have the option of extending the deadline if we need to. So there is a deadline, you're saying, and what about the interest that we earn on this in the meantime? Do they get that as well? Yes, they do. Every month, at the end of every month, we calculate the interest and we add it to the amount they've given us. In fact, every quarter, when we send the returns to the province, we have to indicate how much interest we've had, and what is the balance we have for each of the projects. Yeah, we have to show it. We show it to the province separately. Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. We will go to, unless there's no further questions. I will ask councillor Cooy for a massive motion here. So councillor Cooy, council direct administration to proceed with the deep utility replacement on 12th Avenue, west to center, pending an approval for the deep utility scope amendment from municipal affairs, and that council authorized administration to transfer funding within the long-term recovery grant in the amount of $1,766,087 from Center Street reconstruction south of the roundabout. And further, that council accepts the revised budget for the 12th Avenue reconstruction west of Center Street with funds continuing to come from long-term recovery grant. Councillor Cooy?
I will give you that massive motion.
Councillor Nychuk?
In favor.
Councillor Kinghorn?
In favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
In favor.
Councillor Masterman?
I was going to ask you to repeat it, but I think I'll just be in favor.
I am not going to grant you that request. In favor. Councillor Moore?
Massively in favor.
Nice. And Mayor Snodgrass, in favor. Motion is carried massively. Okay, moving down, still probably Tom and Riley on the Southwest Dyke and 12th Avenue project. Tender award.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt before Tom kicks off and maybe Cara can advise. We need the, so this depends on the resolution coming out of in camera. So to award, we need the go-ahead on the project coming from in camera.
Okay, let's move over to that, which is item number 5.4 in Resolution SC 26-2020. You want to quickly speak to this, Riley or Tom? So that the YouTubers know what we're talking about?
Sure, let me pull up my cover sheet here for a second. So we had, we had a land issue specifically to Southwest Dyke and how that applies to our construction timeline. And so we had a conversation with council with regards to moving forward with a land purchase to further the project, knowing that appeals are outstanding on the project.
Good. And knowing that we've been through the Alberta environment and the appeals are, we believe, are very much negotiable, and we can resolve them through the mediation process that we're involved with these people. So we feel that it's very low risk at this point in time to proceed with this. So it's, we have to, we have to remove this piece with the landowner, with John and Gregory Montith, with the level of confidence that we have in the process and where we're at in that process, so that we can get this dyke moving forward and get construction going.
That is correct. We have an Alberta environment approval. We have a couple appeals which, upon review, we feel can be addressed and are recommending we move forward with the project.
Excellent. Any other questions before we move on on this one, council? I will be asking councillor Kinghorn for this motion that council direct administration to waive the conditions requiring appeals related to the Alberta environment and Parks approval dated January 28th, 2020, to be resolved with respect to the purchase and sale with John and Gregory Montith dated April 16th, 2018, and that council further direct administration to advance to the town's lawyer the funds required to complete the purchase of the option A lands as defined in such agreement and to complete the purchase of the option A lands as defined in the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I will give you that motion.
You very much. Councillor Nychuk, the vote?
In favor.
Councillor Cooy?
In favor.
Macmillan?
In favor.
Councillor Masterman?
In favor.
Councillor Moore?
In favor.
Snodgrass is in favor. The motion carries. Now, we will go back to, that was 26. 26, and we will go back to number 20. So back to the tendering motion. Riley, can you speak to that at all?
We can. I guess we've done, we just finished the budget amendment for 12th Avenue, and now we've released the contingent, or the conditions on the land sale, which were the two outstanding items to be able to move forward with construction. So before you is the proposal to award the project to Kidco Construction, so we can move forward with the project.
Okay. And just to, maybe just to point a clarification on these projects that involve provincial money and provincial funds, that we have to pretty much pick lowest bidder. There's very little flexibility in the lowest bidder. Is that correct, Riley?
That is correct. There is sometimes a little bit of wiggle room for local experience, but we're looking at the contractors that bid, we're all prescreened, all have experience working in the southern Alberta region, so they're familiar with ground conditions and whatnot, so.
Yeah. I guess what I'm saying is, just so that everybody that's watching this understands, these are not Town of High River funds. When you use provincial funds, the tendering process gets very, very big, and we have to respect taxpayer dollars and how these are being used. So as long as the contractor meets the conditions, it's pretty much goes to lowest bidder.
It was a public procurement process, so anyone was open to bid, and we are bound by free trade agreements as well. So there is a certain amount of, a lot of transparency that's required in terms of these processes.
Thanks, Riley. So I will ask on, to councillor Moore for the motion that council direct administration to award the construction contract, Kidco Construction Limited, in the amounts of $12,317,547.53 for the Southwest Dyke and 12th Avenue projects.
I will make that motion, Mayor Snodgrass, and if I may just speak to it for one little point, is that included in the total is a number of subcontractors, many of which are local individuals as well.
That is correct. Just because it's a big company that doesn't exist in High River does not mean there is not local contractor involvement with it. You're absolutely correct, councillor Moore. So for the vote on that motion, councillor Masterman?
I'm in favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
In favor.
Councillor Cooy?
In favor.
Councillor Kinghorn?
Not sure about the 53 cents, but for the rest, I'm totally in favor.
Okay, I'll run it over to you, councillor Kinghorn. Councillor Nychuk?
In favor.
Mayor Snodgrass is in favor. Congratulations, High River, we are officially under construction on the Southwest Dyke, which is fantastic. Southeast Phase 4 Center Street tender acceptance, so this is to the Center Street project. Riley again? Or Tom?
Actually, Chris is going to be presenting today.
Chris on, or is Nicole doing that?
Krista, manager of engineering.
Krista, thank you.
There we go. You can see me now. Sorry, my mic was off, so it wasn't like popping up.
Thanks, Krista.
No problem. I was like, why can't you guys see me? I'm here today to ask for council's direction on the scope and budget and awarding of the Southeast Phase 4 Center Street project. This is for the construction of the deep utilities from 2nd Avenue and 7th Avenue that were identified during the flood as being damaged. Just on this past March 12th, 2020, the tender for the construction actually closed. There was nine bids that were received. The lowest bid was from AIC Construction in the amount of $3,557,113. The funds for this project are also coming from the long-term recovery grant. And, sorry, my notes are backwards. Um, and given, sorry. So the total project cost is estimated at 4.5 million. And that includes all the engineering and the quality insurance, the forest, like all of those extra stuff in there, um, as well as the contingency and subtotal, or then it ends up being the 4.5. Um, the, the original allocated budget for this project was three, sorry. Was the 3.1 million. Um, with the transfers that are happening from the other projects from, from short, from the surpluses that are brought into this project. Um, it ends up equating to about four, just over 4.5 million. So it, with the totals that the project is going to cost and the amount that we have left over in the funding, um, there's about $300,000 left for a contingency. Um, so if the project has any overrun or anything like that, um, there is a couple of ways that we can deal with this. Um, similar to what Tom was saying for the, the dyke, um, was that we can bring it from the other lower priority projects and bring it into Center Street if we find out that the funding, we end up having more, we need more funding for it. Um, so we would do it the same way. Or we could also go, option two would be that there's some side streets that are being redone at the same time as this construction on Center Street. So we could potentially do away with the Seventh Avenue work. Um, mind you, this is underground stuff, so it's, once we have the road open it, then it makes sense to maybe do that connection. So if we were to cancel Seventh Avenue, there'd be about $464,000 we got from that that we could use as a contingency. Um, so those are the two options that we have to work with.
Okay, thanks, Krista.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Krista on this? I think it's important that once you, we all know that once you open a road up, you might as well get as much done as you possibly can when you do that because it's disruptive to everybody. So it's, we all know it very, very well. You're, you, you bite it when you can and, and deal with it and move on, so.
I got a couple of questions.
Going back later on drives people nuts and all of us too. So go ahead with questions. I don't know who that was. Michael?
That was me. Sorry, mayor. Um, to touch on the contingency portion, it's, it, it seems to me that, sorry, there was a couple of numbers thrown out there on, on contingency that could be there. Um, this might be more to Riley, but don't we, from what I was quickly calculating in my head, that's only a contingency with the dollars that I heard was about 10%. I don't think that's the contingency percentage that you generally operate under, is it? I, I'm just, I'm just wondering how tight we are and if we're gonna have to come back to find funding to complete this.
Um, that is tight. Uh, when we're looking at the surpluses in the other projects, that's uh kind of, we just applied all the leftover from the surpluses and that's what we ended up with. We don't normally run within 8.4. Um, Krista, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I haven't looked at this in a while, but was the, for the construction, the AIC contract, does it have a separate contingency within it?
Um.
I think we.
I can't remember if it says it in. I think it said it was no, they had no contingent, no, the construction cost, I think, would have contingency, sorry. Um, I don't know if Tom is still on. He might know the answer to that, too.
No, it's included. So we are, we do have a second contingency in there within the contract. They have to include that as part of their bid, anticipating some changes. And it looks like we have left it included. So there is, there is more, because you are right, Mike. Um, going into a main replacement program with only eight and a half percent is um, uh, probably not going to be sufficient. But it was the way the numbers worked out, and we are carrying that separate contingency.
Okay, okay. So there's, there's some comfort there.
Yes.
Tight, tight times, so a, another ask for 500,000 or a million, um, somewhere once we get into this project, um, isn't going to be well received, so.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
And just to throw a point on funding, we, can I go ahead, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Cola.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, just to confirm again, uh, if, if in case we need fund, we still have some surplus MSI fund that we can apply at a future date, if need be.
Thanks, Cola, for jumping in. That eases my conscience a bit. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll ask for a motion from councillor Nychuk, that council direct administration to proceed with option one, allowing for Seventh Avenue tie-in work to be included in the scope of work. And that council authorizes administration to transfer funding within the long-term recovery grant in the amount of $1,095,339 from Southwest Infrastructure and Repairs, Phase Four and Five, Sanitary Force Main and Lift Station decommissioning and upgrades, and Southwest Main replace Phase Three. And further, that council direct administration to award the tender to AIC Construction. Councillor Nychuk?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Councillor Kinghorn?
In favor.
Councillor Cooley?
In favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
In favor.
Councillor Masterman?
In favor.
Councillor Moore?
In favor.
Mayor Snodgrass is in favor. Motion carries. Now on item, our recommendation 27-2020. Thanks very much, Krista, for that.
Thank you.
And this one, uh, High River Healthcare Hero Day. Um, do you want to speak to this just for a second, Kathy?
Absolutely. I would be happy to. Um, um, the Harvard District Healthcare Foundation has, is obviously along with, I think, most people in our community, recognizing the incredible work that our local healthcare team is doing through all of this. And, and uh, and as things are beginning to ramp up, we wanted to um, to just let our community be able to express our appreciation and gratitude in a bit of a more formal way. And so we are declaring and asking the town to proclaim May 1st High River Healthcare Hero Day and encouraging residents to um, to show their gratitude by way of social media posts, window lawn, lawn signs, electric messaging, and participating in what we hope will be our loudest 7:00 PM shout-out. Uh, and just to really get engaged and, and to show support to our local health team.
Fantastic. Well, way, way better than I was, could have put it, so thanks, Kathy. Um, yeah, and this is extremely important right now, and I commend um, Michael, Rhonda, and Kathy for, for putting this together through the foundation because what's going on in this town, for those that you, those of you that are watching this on YouTube, and um, you know what our frustrations were last week. Well, I tell you what, what's happened in this town in the last seven days is absolutely unbelievable with um, the amount of resources that we have from, from the government of Alberta, the Ministry of Health, Alberta Health Services, our whole PCN network. I'm gonna forget some in this little spiel, but um, you know, primarily the, and a huge shout-out to our doctors, nurses, and our local healthcare professionals. I don't care what involvement you have in our healthcare in this town. You are a critical piece um, to help us try to get through this as best we possibly can. So um, keep May 1st in mind, and we will be pumping it out because we gotta make it loud and proud, and I got a couple of PA systems I might set up too, so I can, uh, better than a pot and pan, right? Eh? I'm gonna put a mic in the pot and pan. I got ideas. So on this one, I will ask councillor Masterman uh for the motion. Whereas COVID-19 is a global pandemic that is impacting the Town of High River, and council wishes to publicly thank all of the healthcare workers who are supporting our community during this difficult time. Be it resolved that council declare May 1st, 2020 as High River Healthcare Hero Day. And, I'm not done yet, I had to turn the page. And that council direct administration to communicate this important day through the means referenced in the letter attached to the April 21st, 2020 special council meeting agenda. Councillor Masterman?
Sorry, mayor. Mayor Craig, I happily and enthusiastically make that motion.
For the vote, councillor Moore?
I happily and enthusiastically, I am in favor.
Councillor Macmillan?
I am happily and very enthusiastically in favor of that motion.
Councillor Cooley?
Thank you all for taking this motion forward. Yes, in favor.
Councillor Kinghorn?
Extremely happy, in favor.
Councillor Nychuk?
I'll, I'll, I'll switch the words up a little bit, but uh, with utmost pride in those healthcare workers in our community, I, I am totally in favor of this.
Awesome. And I am definitely in favor. Well done. I'm in favor too. Motion carries. Cara, just to confirm, I've bounced around in this agenda, so just to confirm that I've thought everything?
Yes, you have gone through everything, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you to those that uh are watching in on YouTube. We're hoping that even after this COVID stuff, that we're gonna continue um, to broadcast our council meetings this way because I think there's great value and makes it easier for people to be able to get in rather than coming down to Town Hall. So um, we're working hard on the COVID thing, and everybody's, everybody's completely engaged to try to get us through this. So um, I'll have more on my Thursday at 11:00 AM Facebook live feed to, to discuss some of those things. So um, please get in on there. If you have questions about what's going on, you can put your questions in the feed, and I will answer them. So um, please, and stay safe, stay healthy. And on that, meeting adjourned at 2:12 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Craig.
Thanks, mayor.
Thanks, staff.
Thanks, mayor.